I'm going to call the Thursday, April 18th business meeting of Norbert Borough Council's order. All right, I would like to present the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the free, solid, and honest nation.
Are there any agenda additions or changes? I have no comments this one.
I just want to do a roll call.
Oh, roll call, I'm just getting things started.
I appreciate your efficiency.
Please, here.
President Bush, here. Vice President Rickards.
Here.
Councilmember Winston.
Here.
Councilmember Birrock.
Here.
Councilmember Spear.
Here.
Councilmember Galdini, here. Councilmember Samson, here.
And Mayor Dorich.
Here.
Still have no comments. Mayor Dorich, do you have a vote?
Um, just a couple. I want to wish those, uh, those in Norbert who are celebrating Passover next week, um, a good holiday. I hope they enjoy it. It's a nice, it's a nice holiday with family. I also want to remind folks that, um, a week from Saturday, uh, the 27th is the Norbert Run. Uh, it's an annual event. Uh, we do check down the streets in Norbert to traffic. There'll be, there'll be posts about it, uh, in the upcoming weekly newsletter. Uh, but if you need to get out before Saturday morning, park outside the borough so you can get to your car. Um, we don't want cars going through the course for everybody's safety. Um, and it's a great day. It's a great run. Uh, I would, uh, encourage anybody, uh, who's a runner, who can make it, to join in, and, uh, it's a, it's a really nice day. It's a great event for a great cause. Uh, so, uh, just be on the lookout for those, uh, traffic signage closures, and, um, and that's it.
What time in the morning did it close?
Oh, I'm sorry. The run starts at nine. I would anticipate, so it's a little later this year. The run starts at nine. So, uh, I would anticipate that the roads will be closed around eight, eight a.m.
It's a new course.
It is a new course. The course has been slightly, uh, slightly adjusted for safety purposes.
Yeah, no longer goes on the south side. Really?
Yep.
Due to the safety concerns last year.
Oh, is that what I thought? I thought it was because it was such a hard run.
It was adjusted so that I think we wouldn't have to shut down Woodwood Road.
Yes.
Oh, I thought it's because we're an aging population.
That's it.
All right. Uh, let's now move on to the public comments. I'll start in the room. You should make a public comment then. Uh, let's move online. Uh, please raise your hands and, uh, Carol Marie, I see you, uh, online. I think you're the only member of the public. You, you go ahead and unmute yourself and, uh, begin your public comment.
Hello, everybody. I wanted to just let you know your microphone is very, very muted and you can barely hear what you were saying. So I think you just said public comment, so here we go.
Go ahead.
Um, I do have my question is, uh, what are the plans for the RFP for Sevigny Park, the Bakari Avenue side of Sevigny at 201?
There is no update on that. Nothing has changed.
Now, there's been talk about plans for the demolition of the school at 201, and a member of Fongi was talking about that last week. Uh, what are the plans for demolition of 201 at the school?
The borough has no new plans and no new updates at this time, and we have not taken any action. And it hasn't been discussed in any of our meetings. There's no news.
Okay, so, so then here's another question I have. Um, since there's really no plans, uh, there was an email on November 15th, 2023, to Matt, Fred, and Cindy from Jean, talking about raising the EIT taxes for the next four years. It says, quote, "I'd support a plan to make incremental tax increases over the next four years that would allow for staffing and financial resources for some of the needs below and for the economic impacts of inflation, rising interest rates, economic slowdown, or potential recession." And then Jean, you listed, I can read the list of, of things you have, and one of them is demolition for 201 Sevigny. And the, the question I have is, why at this time are you thinking of raising the EIT? Because at a half percent, it was almost double the estimated amount that you were, um, you were planning on. He was planning about $345,000. You made between $700,000 and $750,000. And then you still raised it to three-quarter percent. With taxes, why are you raising them again? With the costs that are killing us, normal people, um, I think the borough should look at decreased spending and putting these projects on hold and waiting for the economy to settle, instead of raising taxes in a economic downturn when everything is costing everybody so very much. Um, I mean, raising taxes is not a way to, uh, to spend your way into or out of debt as well as getting projects that really don't need to be done right now.
All right, have you concluded your comment, Carol Marie?
I also wanted to say that, um, and Matt, I think I've talked to Matt about this. The, um, Philadelphia Furniture Bank, we used them a couple of years ago at the Big Trash Week to, uh, because people give away such good things, and Philadelphia Furniture Bank works to, um, give furniture to people in need. So they have expressed an interest to, again, participate with us. So I just wanted to let the borough know and get the approval that we can go ahead and, uh, talk with them about picking up good stuff during Big Trash Week.
I think if we can, my personal opinion is, if we can do it after spring cleanup, because I think there's some feedback from what I've heard that people like the spring cleanup process. And so if we can coordinate with them to come in on the tail end of it, why not?
See, now, my thought was to have it, you know, it notoriously rains during Big Trash Week. It's like almost a guarantee. So, um, the way I was thinking of doing it is having the, um, I talked with the Builder Furniture Bank. She actually called me at like 5:15 today, so after the office closed. That's why, Matt, you're getting these now also. Have them come, um, they only work Monday to Friday. Have them come Monday and Wednesday to do the north side as people put their stuff out, and then Friday on the south side. Because the problem I see, if they come after Big Trash Week and in case somebody puts something out with the goodness of their heart to take it, and Philadelphia Furniture Bank goes, eh, I don't think I want that, or that's not what we need, or that's not in the condition, then we have to figure out how to dispose of that. So I was thinking, you know, from the experience we had last time, to have Big Trash, to have them coincide with the different street neighborhoods for Big Trash. Again, it's in the weeds, but, um, it was a great project a couple of years ago when we did it, and they're really excited. The Philadelphia Furniture Bank has given 1,400 households, complete households of furnishings. And as generous as this community was when we did it the last time, people were putting out tons of stuff, that they were not prepared to take everything. And this year, they're going to make arrangements to have bigger, two bigger trucks coming around to take things.
All right, thanks.
So again, we can talk about this, but I've wanted to let council know that, hey, they're really excited about participating and getting our good junk.
Thank you. We, we are aware of the, uh, of the opportunity, so we'll discuss it. Thank you, uh, Carol Marie. I don't see anybody else in, uh, the virtual. So, uh, declare public comment closed. And we can move on to the consent agenda.
You move the Borough Council through the consent agenda items.
I think technically it's just A at this point. Any discussion of the consent agenda? All right, we're voting to approve Consent Agenda Item 8A. All those in favor? Come on, are you in the room? All right, it's unanimous. Um, let's move on to our consideration items. Item 9A is road paving.
I move that Borough Council award the 2024 road paving contract to Innovative Construction Services, Inc., the lowest responsible bidder in the amount of $113,314.60 per the attachment.
Is there a second? Okay.
So, thank you, Mr. President. If you've noticed, uh, this meeting packet includes the return of council motion sheets, and I've connected them to the appropriate committee. So thank you, Councilmember Winston, for taking the, uh, taking the lead on the first one. And you've also, I hope you've noticed, the Action Item Request Form that is included in this meeting packet, which is a, everything you need to know about this action thing, which is a part of the meeting packet. The idea is to provide this information while ahead, uh, in advance of the meeting, to provide as much information publicly as possible to help you all be in a better position to make a good decision. So, that said, I've summarized everything on this Action Item Request Form with assistance from the Public Works Manager and Engineer, and would entertain any questions about this that council might have.
About the process or the, this specific action item?
I was thinking this specific action item.
No.
Do you want to remind the public what, uh, what the paving is going to be this year?
So, okay, this paving program is paving Atterford Avenue from Montgomery Ave. to Iona Ave. All of Shirley Road, but not Shirley Circle.
Which is a private road.
Which is a private road.
I, I will ask that if the engineers can get us and we can talk about getting an estimate from the residents of Shirley Circle that I could share with other residents.
Yep, will do.
Yeah.
Will do. And you've also noticed, uh, part of the meeting packet, I included the Highway Aid Fund, which will be paying for this year's road paving. I had budgeted $115,000 for this year's road paving, and this is coming in under that. And other good news related to the Highway Aid Fund, you'll also see the budgeted for $113,792. We received our annual Liquid Fuels Fund today in excess of that amount by about $1,000. So we actually got more than what was, was escapable. So, good news.
And this is dedicated money that can only really be used for road repairs and very specific things. Very few other things. This is provided to us by the state for us to maintain our roads. And these roads that we're looking at were identified by Penone as in most need of repair in the borough, which is one reason why we're focusing on this area.
Yes, connected to the roadway improvement program.
Does this estimate include restriping on that road?
It includes everything.
Yeah, restriping, consider share of this.
I think the borough, it did not, but the borough will absorb those costs, as we've discussed previously. It's a minimal investment to paint sharos on, uh, on that newly, newly basic.
That's not a margin.
It is not. That's something that the borough will, will do.
There is.
Yep.
All right. Just curious, this is the way you described it. So I guess, um, the Liquid Fuels Fund comes from the tax on gasoline?
Yes.
Right? So.
The state, the state takes the tax on gasoline and they return it to communities.
Yeah, I get that, but I'm just thinking, like, ten years out.
Well, they, a lot, a lot of states have been applying that tax as, as a fee for electric vehicles.
Like, you have to pay a fee.
And you participated, yeah.
I mean, both are paid here.
But it's not a possibility.
No.
It's too early.
I mean, they, if, if other states do it, Pennsylvania will probably start doing it in a few years, but, you know, this is a converging issue.
We're not the only.
The Yankees love their apostle fuels.
Well, Pennsylvania is not the only state that funds highways through a gasoline tax, so, you know, I mean, all, all the states are going to be dealing, a lot of states are going to be dealing with this issue, uh, down the road. Any other comments? All right, uh, let's vote on awarding the 2024 road paving program contract. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Uh, item B, traffic study.
I move that Borough Council authorize the borough's traffic engineer to conduct a traffic study in intersection of Dudley and Price Avenue, an estimated cost of $1,500 for the attachments.
Second.
So this came, uh, as a result of some, uh, public input, uh, several crashes at Dudley and Price Avenue. This was a recommendation from Chief String. While it does, from a police perspective, this intersection does not rise to a four-way stop. His recommendation is to engage in the traffic engineer to study, to do a formal traffic impact study, traffic study at this intersection, identify other things, or to see if a warrant would be, uh, recommended for a four-way stop.
And we would need this traffic study in hand before we did any significant changes to the road, right? I mean, realistically?
Realistically, uh, technically, yes. Realistically, I mean, there are many signs that are installed that don't necessarily have a traffic study.
I mean, if we were going to do a bump out or something, or a stop sign, I mean.
My recommendation would be to have a traffic engineer do a, to do a study.
If, just we, here, but we are also talking about, even if a four-way stop isn't necessarily the answer, there may be some issue for the sight lines. Certainly got some feedback from folks who live over there, that they have seen people basically not, not either expecting or not being able to see the cars that don't, that have the right way without the stops. So there's, um, there's, might be a suggestion of making more parking spots for first owners to improve the sight lines there. So it's not just about.
I think that's why we have the traffic engineer.
Right, yeah. I just want to make clear that it's not just about.
And the Public Health and Safety Committee voted to recommend that we do this, or just send it to council?
Yeah, we.
Recommend that we do it? All right. Any other questions or comments? Okay, this is not committing against any particular course of action, just a study.
Also, it, it was pointed out at the Public Safety Committee that it's, it's well within the budget for the traffic engineering studies, that we have $20,000 budgeted and we've not used, uh, a lot of it.
Okay. We are, let's vote then. We'll vote to authorize a traffic study for the intersection of Dudley and Price Avenue. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Item C, change hours.
I move that Borough Council peruse the just amended hours for the administrative office to be open for business in public between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. for a trial period of three months starting May 1st, 2024, per the attachments.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So this came about, um, as you all know, the administrative office is a challenging working environment. It is a wide open room, and it's very difficult to have any uninterrupted work time. And so in talking with the administrative staff and trying to identify solutions that would enable us to have some focused work time, this idea kind of grew organically as, as this conversation amongst the three of us is, hey, why don't we try having an hour in the morning and an hour in the afternoon that we're not open to the public, we're still here to give us some focused work time? And we brought that to Finance and Administration Committee meeting, I believe it was in February. It might have been end of January, uh, February. And, um, we talked about it at that committee meeting, and the committee was supportive of it. And I think it's something that I would encourage this council to consider taking action on, uh, for a three-month trial period. Let's, you know, if council is in support of it, I think it would be a pretty, uh, low-cost experiment to see if it helps our working environment.
Andrew?
Um, and it, as was answered before, if somebody cannot get here between those hours, they can make an appointment.
Yes, thank you.
If they need to.
Yes. And I just wanted to also reiterate that this doesn't affect the tax collector's office hours either, because she's scheduled to be in the office starting at 9:00 a.m. also.
Okay, and, uh, just assume that you'll track any public.
Yes.
And those know if they're.
They'll do.
See if any, uh, concerns from members of the public are unable, that you have to be there to really do something. Okay. Let's vote to approve this change to public hours for the administrative offices. All those in favor? It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Item D, roof refresher.
I move that Borough Council approve Change Order Number Two for the 80 Windsor Avenue Roof Reinforcement Project in the amount of $6,240 for a new contract total of $467,240 for the attachments. The new contract total includes a credit in the amount of $1,900 for Change Order One approved on March 11th, 2024.
Still here, sir?
Second.
Okay.
Yeah, it's again, it's. Thank you, Mr. President. So any, anyone who is, is familiar with home renovations, when, when you start working on an old house, you're going to find something once work starts. And, um, fortunately, and unfortunately, 80 Windsor Avenue is an old house. We don't know what we don't know until we start going in to, uh, uh, make the improvements. As the background information that was provided in the meeting packet explains, there was a wall that was discovered that we didn't know that it was built out too far away from the exterior wall that was built to cover a, what we believe is a sprinkler pipe for this roof reinforcement project to be successful. I'm not a structural engineer. I've been told the structure beams need to be as flush to the exterior wall as possible. This wall was preventing that from happening. So this cost, this $6,240, is the removal of that wall, the, the shifting of the column, and then the reconstruction of the wall once it's done. What was interesting, what was noted was that, um, this new change order includes, Change Order One, which was a $1,900 credit. The original bid included a builder's risk insurance policy. In consultation with the borough's property and liability carrier, it was determined that the borough already has builder's risk insurance at no added cost. So the, um, the contract was reduced by the cost that the contractor would have incurred to get that separate policy. So that's why the total budget impact is only $4,340. And, um, I want to assure council that a contingency of about 10% is industry standard for these types of projects, and this falls within, well within that range.
You have questions for council?
So, do they have a, a sense of, um, you know, when they're, at what point they're going to uncover, like, all of these sort of field conditions? I mean, have they opened up enough at this point to know, like, this is the one they're going to find, or?
I don't know, I don't. I don't know how to answer that, because they're still working to. It's like surgery, right? The, in, in order for them, if you look at the space, in order for them to continue work, they have to excavate very specific locations in the building to put the beams in. It's not like they're stripping it down, you know, breaking it down to the studs. It's, they're performing surgery. And so you don't know until they go with each beam, and they're working systematically. So I don't think there's a, I don't know when they're going to be done doing the extraction part of it. So I don't know. If you read the memo that was also included in the meeting packet, the status update, there were some issues that the project engineer is concerned about. It could be another potential change order having to do with the plaster and lath, the condition of it.
Fair enough. Thank you.
I would also like to bring council's attention to the photos that were included, just to look at the, um, detail and the lengths of, of protection that we went through to protect the library's books. Those are all plywood protection built around every single one of the library stacks and the library floor.
Are those still accessible?
No, they're not.
The kids, the kids' section is, is still open to the public and accessible. The rest of the library is?
I think the library was still, when, when people went down once.
They are. You can, you can get kids' books, or you can reserve books from other libraries, bring them into your, your loan system. But the, uh, the library's own collection of adult, I mean, it's the wrong word. Most of the, the, the children's section is available. The other sections aren't. I mean, they're pretty. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we're voting to approve Change Order Number Two for the 80 Windsor Roof Reinforcement Project in the amount of $6,240. All those in favor? It's unanimous. So we don't need to approve the Change Order, the safest one? All right. Item E is more about change orders.
I move that Borough Council adopt Resolution 2024-08, authorizing the Borough Manager to approve change orders. Cost increases and similar expenditures in the amount not to exceed $15,000 related to the 80 Windsor Avenue Roof Reinforcement Project.
Second. Thank you.
So this is a follow-up motion to the previous motion. As we navigated this change order request from the contractor, it became apparent that I didn't have a good mechanism to process change orders in a timely manner. And we lucked out for this first change order, and it had happened two days before a council meeting. I could get that change order approved by council. Since it was a very specific amount that was approved by this council for this contract, any change to that, I have, I don't have the authority to just approve it. This, this board needs to approve it. And so thanks to working with someone sort of Walco, who provided the, uh, a draft resolution from a different municipality that they have, they have used. It authorizes me as the borough manager to respond to change orders in a timely manner, to authorize that through coordinating with the borough's, uh, project engineer in order to keep this, uh, project on track. Because if we would have to wait for two weeks for the next meeting, the contractor would be just sitting there getting paid prevailing wage, waiting for, uh, any, any action. Any change orders that are approved administratively will then show up on the next council's agenda for review and ratification. This is just a way for us to expedite the review and approval process to keep this project moving on track.
Good to see that this was a request from the contractor to, you know, make sure that we, they could keep to their schedule.
Yes.
They had to wait for council meetings, that, and they might not be able to keep to their schedule.
Yes, that made them, um, you know, gave them anxiety when I said, oh, we have to, please have this, it, it for me for the council meeting. They're like, well, look, great that it's Thursday night, but I can't be waiting for this, for a few, you know, any future change orders.
My only concern is that there's no limit to the number of specific change orders. And so, you know, we could end up with 20 change orders of $14,000, nine after ninety-one dollars. And I, you know, I don't want to give you sort of. I, I think there needs to be a aggregate cap over a certain period. You know, so that you can, so you're not going to come in with six change orders and say, oh, here's $90,000 that I already agreed to pay them.
Oh, I don't think that was the spirit of it.
No, I know, I know, but, you know, we gotta. I, I just, you know, it's, it's the, uh, I guess I'm taking my beat from the, uh, banking rules where, you know, you can't have transactions, you can't, over $10,000 get before any people trying to do it.
So it says, it says here, no more than $15,000 in the aggregate.
It's in the aggregate, okay.
It's in the resolution.
I missed that.
Yep. So it's not going to exceed $15,000 during a council meeting.
Oh, I see, so this one, it's now been approved.
So we had that one because that.
So then that, that, no, but that resets it to zero.
Correct. Yes.
Yeah, okay, so I see the resolution itself says $1,000 in the, yes. The, uh, the motion didn't say.
Right, that's what happened.
Yep.
Okay, okay, better. See, you predicted my. See, you predicted my...
The other... And I assume we're making sure that this contingency clause is in our future?
Yeah, so Al and I were talking about that this morning. It's like, okay, for future capital improvement projects, let's remember, once we have council approve any capital expenditures, let's pass another resolution soon thereafter to enable this same process. And thank you to you, Solicitor Walco, for this assistance. Appreciate it.
Okay, let's vote on Resolution 2024-08, authorizing the Borough Manager to approve change orders not exceeding $15,000 related to 80 Windsor Roof Reinforcement. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Is it for our consideration items? We do have one notable information item on the Community Choice Aggregation Energy Plan. So, EAC, I see, is here to...
Answer your questions or we can give an overview.
Yeah, why don't you give us, you know, a quick overview and then we'll see if there's questions.
All right. So hello, Maryam Shakow, EAC member 149, Maryam. And for those of you especially who are new or need a little refresher, Community Choice Aggregation, CCA, is basically a program by which municipalities join together with a, you can say like a company that facilitates the administrative functions in order to issue joint RFPs to get, well, any kind of energy, but in particular renewable energy, at a lower price than individual households or businesses can procure. So, Community Choice Aggregation, the community is municipal scale. Choice is choice related to source of energy. And the aggregation has to do with the aggregation of households within the municipality and the aggregation of multiple municipalities. So, as many of you know, about a year and a half ago, almost two years ago, the EAC began, learned of a new opportunity, the first one ever in Pennsylvania, to participate in the first, Pennsylvania's first ever Community Choice Aggregation Program, like, from the beginning. So Narberth was the first municipality to sign a memorandum, a non-binding memorandum of agreement that said that Narberth would, if, you know, in the, like, once a CCA program existed, that non-bindingly, Narberth would work with this particular company that is part of a group of pro bono people. The company itself is called Jewel Energy and it's based in New York City. And they run, oh gosh, several dozen Community Choice Aggregation Programs in New York City. And they were, they've been working together with environmental lawyers on a pro bono basis, advocates of renewable energy in Pennsylvania over the past year and a half to try to get this program approved in the state. And at the moment, according to the Borough Law, basically the Borough Code had a provision that said that boroughs have the right to provide energy for the residents of the borough. Townships, cities, and other municipalities in PA do not have this right, as per the codes. So, this group has been working solely with boroughs. Narberth was the first to sign the MOU. Those of you who are on the council, John Walco, were privy to those discussions. And then since then, seven additional boroughs have signed on. And those include Camp Hill PA, State College, which is the biggest borough in the state, Media, Swarthmore, Lansdowne, a couple others.
Hatborough.
Hatborough and one or two others. So, Narberth was actually pivotal in, I think, helping to assuage concerns about something new in PA. So anyway, it's gone through a lot of different state bodies that have kind of reviewed it. And now, after multiple meetings with members of the Pennsylvania Public Utility Commission, the group that's working on it, mostly pro bono, has prepared a petition to the PUC, the Public Utility Commission, to say that basically they gave their, you know, their kind of stamp of approval that says, yes, this is, you know, this is lawful as per PA, you know, law. So, it's the most, so the MOU was reviewed by the council a year or so ago and the solicitor. Since then, there've been various kind of draft implementation plans that have come to the EAC and kind of shared informally with members of the Public Health and Safety Committee, kind of, you know, just like FYI. And each time the EAC has looked at it being like, "Okay, here's more detail about how this would be administered and put in place. Looks good. It looks like kind of what we expected." And so, a week and a half ago, we received the kind of the most, I would say that this petition to the PUC is the most formal document that has been issued since the MOU itself. And so there was a question that we discussed between me and Joe. We discussed, you know, back and forth kind of with Jean as Chair of Public Health and Safety, with Fred, like, does this need full Borough review or not? Is the solicitor able to review it? And basically confirmed that it still is non-binding and therefore, you know, it's still in this kind of provisional, it's still in this kind of provisional status. It did have a few more details than prior implementation plans. It had a lot of background that was just kind of helpful in placing... It wasn't so much detail about what Narberth would be obligated to do or receive in terms of energy, but they've been doing a lot of work kind of uncovering all of the case law and precedent, something, you know, maybe like that. But like, you know, since prior rulings by the Public Utility Commission, for example, in the mid 2000s, there have been, there was an amendment, like a, what's it called? An environmental amendment to the, environmental rights amendment, like a, to the state constitution. So like, the law has kind of moved towards the protection, you know, giving municipalities and other bodies the obligation to sustain the natural environment and preserve it for future generations. The right to clean air, environmental rights amendment, maybe it's called. Clean air, clean water, dealing with climate change, you know, resources recreation, all that kind of stuff was added to the state constitution in a way that means that there's an obligation by, you know, representatives of the public. So, elected and appointed. So anyway, so all that is to say that our solicitor reviewed it yesterday, thank you so much, and concluded that, in fact, it is still in that kind of non-binding, non-legally binding state. So we just wanted to answer any questions, kind of re-discuss it because some of you are new. You may not remember some of the discussions for those of you who were here before, but many of you are new. And just answer questions about the program and also just see if you have any concerns about this petition on the behalf of the eight boroughs who have signed MOUs to join a Community Choice Aggregation Program. It would be in on a name. Like, as a borough owner, there's a request from one of the pro bono lawyers, Barry Brown, who's an environmental lawyer. There's another document that's like a letter stating that we are, kind of employing him on a pro bono basis, these eight boroughs, to represent us in this process with the PUC at no cost, pro bono. And it requires the signature of a borough official, unspecified who that is, so.
Yeah, I'll just add, just on that last point. So, like Maryam said, there's nothing in this petition to the PUC that's committing us to do anything. Ultimately, though it does describe how they envision the program working overall, so if there were elements of that that the Borough Council wasn't happy with, we wouldn't want that to throw a wrench in the works down the road. Any of the boroughs, actually. And then as Maryam said, in order for them to submit this petition, they'll need each of the eight or so boroughs to sign this letter saying that Barry Brown's firm can represent them in this in order for him to be able to submit the petition on behalf of the boroughs.
On a pro bono basis. And, you know, there's a provision in the letter that says, you know, if something comes up where it's like, in order to make the CCA work, you know, there's like a kind of unexpectedly large amount of time that he'd need to, and he and his firm would need to budget for it, he would ask if the boroughs want him to do that on their behalf for a fee, but it's not, it's not with an obligation at any point. It's just like, if we get to a point where, you know, he needs to spend half of his time or some, you know, half of his work hours to, you know, to get this going, then we would have the option of paying, you know, to pursue the CCA. But for, you know, there's no obligation at any point.
The key right now is just, we can't really do anything more until the PUC kind of gives the green light that they are in agreement that this is... The way that boroughs and Jewel and everyone are interpreting the Borough Code and the precedent for this is the way the PUC interprets it also, so that we can proceed to the next steps. Mr. Walco?
I think it was an excellent summary. I confirm that there isn't anything binding. And again, there's certain levels of what is, what we're dealing with here. First, we're not bound to go with a CCA if the PUC determines that CCAs are permitted. That's really what this petition is to say, tell us that we can do this. If the PUC says, "Yeah, go ahead, boroughs, you can do this," you're not bound to do it so far. And if you wanted to do it, there would still be additional contracts that would need to be entered into with Jewel, who would then administer the program if you wanted to move forward in that fashion. So, there would still be decisions to be made. Really, this is just agreeing to allow this petition to be filed in the borough's name. And I've not done any work on this. I think that was a question that the MOU already was spending attorney's fees on this. It seemed like a lot of work went into this petition. First time I saw, seen it was one that was provided to me. So, so far, it hasn't been at any cost legally to the borough.
There's no issue with us bringing in this other pro bono attorney to work on it?
No, no, again, assuming that it's pro bono and you would have to approve any costs or expenses at that time, I don't foresee any costs in that regard. And it's common for municipalities to have special counsel in special matters as well. So that's not unusual as well.
All right, so particularly for council members who were around when we discussed this last.
Yeah, I have two top, sort of, top shelf questions. The first is, do other states already have this in place? I thought so, because I'm pretty sure they have it in New York where I grew up and it's not even unusual or new there.
New York and Illinois both have that, yeah.
And California. For a long time, right?
Minnesota just started, yeah.
Okay. And then the second issue is just from my clarification. If we enter into this, I'm right that members of the Narberth public they're not bound to buy their electricity to the suffice, right? They just get the advantage of it.
Yeah, it's an opt-out. So the big, the big question, I think, for the PUC is, it's opt-out. And so the big question for the PUC, that, so I was on, I think I've been on three meetings with various, you know, members of the PUC. And, you know, the first one, I was there for the first meeting. We actually went to Harrisburg in person and met with like the chairman of the PUC and two lawyers who, you know, were, yeah. And so they, you know, just so you kind of understand the lay of the land, you know, obviously we know that we're in a shale gas producing state and, you know, all of that situation. So, there had been, you know, CCA can be done, can be like instigated by an energy supplier. And so, any energy supplier potentially would be very happy to have a town, you know, or a municipality say, "Oh, okay, we'll be opt-out." You know, like, everyone can just be, you know, like, your customer, you know, and opt-out. So in four, 15 years ago or so, there was, I guess, after Hurricane Katrina when there was a lot of volatility in, in...
It was a different case.
Oh, that was a different case. Okay, anyway. So, there was a moment prior that the PUC ruled no. It was not a borough, but it was a municipality where the kind of, I don't know, the agent, you know, the person who, you know, the entity that really like was the protagonist was a company that would supply the energy that approached a municipality and was like, "Hey, you know, we'll give your people a good deal, you know, your residents a good deal if you do a Community Choice Aggregation." And they would have to opt-out of being our customer. So, the PUC at that time ruled no because they viewed it as basically as predatory. And so when we came in as this group of, you know, citizens from several boroughs and that had signed MOUs and then like, you know, various other, you know, specialists on the team and presented, they said, "Oh, no, we already said, you know, no CCA." So then we just explained to them that this is a different program because it's generated through community. You know, the community is the protagonist seeking this for the purposes of getting cheaper and renewable energy mix. And it was also, we've also seen since the deregulation and the kind of, I guess that's sort of like the umbrella term, the deregulation of the, of the energy, consumer energy market that they actually, and I, we can share this data. It's been found that most people don't, like households, don't opt-out of the current PICO standard mix, which is like very, you know, it's dirty fuels and it's sometimes even more expensive than other options because of the time, you know, there's all these errors. And so we kind of laid that out for them and said, you know, your, you know, your rulings in the past have been based on the assumption that this, you know, kind of individual household-based, you know, choice, like, op, you know, op-in is like functional, but there's very good statistics now that show that for large industrial customers, yes, a huge, you know, they can get great rates by, you know, opting in. But for small businesses and households, it hasn't been, you know, people aren't doing it when they do. They often make like, you know, they get a worse deal than if they had. So, basically, that was the kind of situation. So that's the kind of main hurdle. So the PUC said at first like, "Oh, if you do it, opt into your CCA, that would be fine." And we said, "The EAC and other people in our community have been trying to get, there already exists many opportunities for people to opt into renewable energy and/or cheaper energy than the standard option through PICO." But, you know, we've, you know, we put a banner on, you know, our main street and we, you know, at our birthday. And, you know, even the people who are most, you know, gung-ho about it, they encounter these barriers and it's very challenging. And then the rates change and all that stuff. So we basically were explaining, like, "That's why you should approve this thing that you never heard of before, never considered." And also, remember that this new environmental, whatever it's called, Environmental Rights Amendment was passed since you made that prior ruling about CCAs that actually obligates you to protect the environment. And we were saying that our council...
I think the key to it being opt-out and that the CCA would be the default provider also allows us to buy bulk.
Yeah, right.
Because we have an anticipated number of customers that would be supplying our work.
And right now, we're at 40,000. So when this first kind of opportunity came up and the representatives of this team trying to create the CCA approached us, they said, you know, with a minimum of 15,000 households, like, you know, Narberth's whatever, 3,000.
Not even.
Not even, 1,000, whatever. And then Swarthmore was next. You know, if we got up to 15,000, then we could, you know, we have a pretty good shot at getting a good deal. And now it's actually at 40,000. So, there was a period of time when Joe and I and Lee on the EAC, we were like, you know, contacting EAC members and other boroughs and saying, "Please, consider doing this." Like, we went on these like kind of group calls for Ready for 100 Communities and saying, "If you're a borough, you know, like, please consider this because it will not be economically feasible unless we get a critical mass of households." And now it exists, so that's like, great.
Can I see a couple more questions? Go ahead, Aaron.
So, do you pick one, like this conglomerate? Does it pick one supplier?
There'll be an RFP that shows out and different suppliers will bid and we'll see.
So you ultimately, you'll pick one?
Yeah. In theory, the, all of the boroughs will pick the same one, but it doesn't, that doesn't necessarily, we'll probably get the best deal if we do that, but it doesn't necessarily have to be that way. Swarthmore could choose one and we could choose another, maybe based on differences in the mix of renewables or other factors, length of the contract or something like that. But it'll go out for bids and we'll, we'll pick one if we find one acceptable.
And, and that means there'll be a term and then at the end of that term, you potentially.
Yeah. So I think they're envisioning something like a three year term initially or something around there. But I, they want to have a structure in place of that. For example, when there's dips in the energy price, they can take advantage of that to get longer terms.
Right. Because I mean, the problem that I've experienced with the current arrangement is after your year is up, all of a sudden like the bill comes and it's like a checkup and you have to like detect that and.
And in fact, that's one of the arguments in favor of doing this is that it would protect customers from those kinds of things because the CCA wouldn't be engaging in that kind of practice.
And would be able to negotiate, like basically, you know, the basic idea in terms of administration and kind of keeping an eye and making sure there's no like, you know, anything disadvantageous from a customer perspective. So this company Juul Energy, you know, which again, it's like, no one is doing this in Pennsylvania because it hasn't been done before. I don't know if they're the only one in New York. I know that they're, I think they're the largest one in New York. There's other companies that exist in the country that, where they're the administrator. So basically they have often these smaller municipalities, like, like they have several dozen in New York State. So it's like each, all of them use Juul as the administrator and Juul's the one who like really helps it. You know, they bring the decisions to the borough decision makers, but all the kind of technical stuff and the day to day administration that the boroughs don't have the capacity for, because we only have a couple employees, they handle the vast majority of those things to make it feasible, like the manpower issue. That was one of the main concerns. Samantha, you know, was like, are we gonna have to manage our own energy? And the answer was that people, like if people have a question about their bill, they, like the contact will actually be a CCA administrator contact, who would be the one who would be like.
It's like the Berchheimer of.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Now, there's some elements in the, in the petition that are a little, we were a little on the fear on what's the borough responsibility, what's Juul's responsibility? But that's not really the main, the perfect petition.
We can negotiate, we could negotiate that. And we made clear from the beginning, and I think they understand because they've worked, this particular company Juul has worked with. You know, like when I looked, I actually reached out about a year ago to some of the like, map, map equivalent, the borough managers and like township managers in New York. And I was like, hey, how's it been? And they were like, it was fine. There was, there were a few cases when there was extreme energy volatility, when one company that was part of a CCA reneged on its contract. And so all those customers got kicked onto like the standard, you know, the kind of PICO equivalent, all of a sudden. So that did happen, that did happen when it was like, I don't know, a year ago or so when everything was like with the invasion of Ukraine and stuff like that. But in terms of, you know, basically managing the day to day and making sure that the deal is good for the customers and, you know, a big question that they kind of have teed up for their customers is like, okay, well, you know, here's the rate, you know, here's the rate for electric and I don't know, I guess electric right now. If you were to get a hundred percent renewable energy that's not Texas wind, so like it's in a place where it would help renewable energy grow, like NPA or, you know, somewhere in the mid Atlantic or someplace where it needs like incentives, this would be your price. If you agree that you are okay with Texas wind in order to, or some other like very plentiful renewable energy source, but it wouldn't help grow, it wouldn't help incentivize the creation of, you know, new solar panel arrays, new wind arrays, et cetera, then this would be your price and that would be lower. And so then the borough would decide, are we willing, like what, you know, or do we want to have fifty percent water, fifty percent other, or even ten percent non-renewable energy in order to keep the price at the same point or lower than what an individual would get through the standard PICO base rate? So that's one of the things. So they kind of tee it up and say like, these are your options right now, given the prices for these different kinds of energy. And, you know, like we made clear just EAC, we're like, we're not gonna recommend that people have to opt out from something that's more expensive than the PICO base rate. In West, I was just looking at one of the Westchester CCAs and they had like a two tier thing where it's like, I don't know how.
Westchester, New York?
New York.
Yeah, Westchester County, New York. And I don't know exactly how they do it in terms of like opt in, opt out, like, you know, which one they get opted into. But like option A is slightly more expensive than non-renewable energy, but it's like a hundred percent, you know, so it's like an option for the community residents. And then there's like option B, which is like, straight up, it's like seventy-five percent renewable, but it's, and it's at the cost that they would pay as individuals. And so there's kind of two tiers and you can choose if you want to pay a little more and get more renewable or better, like better option.
Yeah, just, I think just also as a point of information, I think that, and it is opt out. There are also, I think, provisions in our zoning group. So obviously you have your base zoning entitlements, you can do those. There are certain things that act as kind of bonus provisions. So we have a couple provisions that if you activate a bonus that goes above and below your general RSP, you, you are, you're committed in some way, shape or form to participate in this program in the, in the borough adopted version of whatever that program is.
Yeah, they're on that one, the conditional uses.
Yeah.
We're, we're just adopting it.
But is that a problem with the PUC?
No, I mean, there are, there's several other carve outs. Like people who are getting low income assistance who are in like a special, you know, a special kind of gen program that's not the standard PICO rate, they would not be automatically included, so they would have to opt in. And then people like my whole household actually where we already, we have opted out of the standard or opted into the energy payoff for renewables, like and pay more than the standard PICO. We would not be automatically included, we have to opt in, yeah. So they don't take, basically the idea that they're saying is that, the idea is that anyone who has not changed their electricity wire, who is on the default, would be then placed on the default CCA. And there would be like multiple mailings and reach outs and community education saying, if you want to opt out, you can. But these are the people who have not yet opted out, just the majority.
And then subsequently for new accounts, if you've already been to the borough, the default would be the CCA.
So like for me who's, I get my energy from green energy, I would actually have to opt in.
Exactly.
Okay, because I'm already opted. Okay.
And if you have net metering, if you have solar panels and net metering, I can't remember exactly how it works, but you're definitely, you'd at least have to opt in and as possible you couldn't even.
So we want to communicate all this to everyone when we get to that.
Yeah. But these are just some of the kinds of things that are in this petition to the PUC explaining basically, you know, there's all kinds of provisions so that it is not predatory, so that it's actually in the interest of individual consumers as well as the community, the boroughs that desire collectively and have, you know, elected their officials on the platform of sustainability.
Yeah, so that answers my question about people who've already chosen. What is the idea that there will be someone looking out for us? Like after, you know, the event of the company raises rates or there's volatility?
It's like an off, yeah, basically there's like an office where borough officials could call if they're like, hey, the prices are going haywire, what's going on, you know, give me an update. Or individual people were like, why doesn't my bill say blah blah, you know, like Narber's CCA instead of PICO or whatever, you know.
I think their intention though is to enter into a long-term contract and like to keep it stable.
And so they're making, you know, at first we didn't realize this, but they're making a point where, you know, they have these, you know, they've been tracking it for a long time. So on their website, it kind of shows like, you know, on average, the CCA, like over the course of years, the CCA has provided lower cost and renewable energy than the standard New York non-renewable energy. However, in any given moment, because the prices go up and down all the time, there are moments when people are paying more for energy than the non-renewable energy mix. And then if people, you know, like playing the stock market or something, they're like, oh, it's for this, I'm gonna opt out and they can do that. But the borough, you know, like barring something extreme, you know, like Joe's saying, it would be a, it would be a whole dynamic contract. Thank you for all the time that you've been here. Like you guys have put into this and, you know, review on it.
So there's nothing you need from us, right?
Signature.
Signature.
Signature. But I mean, there's like no council action.
No official action. No, I don't see any objection to a signature here, so we should be good.
We didn't know if you all felt the need to do like a full review.
Yeah, right. There's, so there's lots of details about how they envision the program operating, like for example, the cost of, there'll be a search charge and electricity, which will cover the program administration cost. That, those details, we asked the PUC to kind of prove the program as described, but I think some of the details are remaining to be worked out still. So we didn't, we wanted to weigh in on any of those kinds of things.
I did, I did look at that search charge in particular. It was about just under two percent of like current.
I think it was about three percent or something like that.
I mean, it's, it's not zero, but it's, it seemed fairly moderate.
It's like point three cents per kilowatt hour or something like that. What do you think it's like?
Three dollars per megawatt.
Three dollars per megawatt hour, which, yeah. Yeah, megawatt, usually thinking kilowatts or something. That's what I had to do. Like that seems like a good amount, sorry, multiply by a thousand.
Yeah. So if you pay, like what's the standard now, is it?
Seventeen cents per kilowatt hour or something like that.
That includes the delivery charge.
Right, okay, yeah.
So it's like ten point, I, I'll just read you the trimono, it's ten point two.
This is the, this is the charge here.
So then it would be like ten point five.
Yeah. Yeah. So in case, there's a lot of details like that in the document.
We can certainly forward this to all of you. I think the issue is that if it went through a full review, did it need to go through a full review?
Well, you know, Mr. Walker looked at it and, you know, he didn't have any concerns.
Specifically, it's not tied, it's really just scripted, like the program. But again, I was really reviewing it, really not knowing that I was supposed to be reviewing to see if it was binding, but that's actually what I was just making sure. And right, I'm not concerned with binding borough to something that they can't get out of or doing, or it's really just a step forward with it to see what the PUC does with it. I mean, the PUC say, no, we're not gonna do it. And then I'll be back to drawing.
Yeah, I'm, I'm hearing positive, I mean, councils, you know, continues to be in favor of this.
Remains in favor.
We have no concerns from our, from our solicitors. So anybody who has further questions, I am obviously.
We can certainly forward this to.
Why don't you send the document to us, just so we're all more aware of, as this coalesces what it's gonna look like.
I, I think the borough itself would be eligible to buy its electricity through this path.
Yeah.
The borough itself.
The borough itself.
We use a lot of, I mean.
Right, yeah, I mean, right, yeah, right now the PPA is like, it's a better deal than.
It can be companies, it can be anybody in the borough.
It's not just, it's not just.
Yeah.
You gotta be physically located in.
Yeah. I mean, I did see there's like a separate thing where I think like the tri county is looking at doing an aggregation of public, I don't know, maybe just county home facilities like Monaco, Delco and, I don't know, maybe Philadelphia County, or, you know, of, of county buildings. They're trying to aggregate just the county government, but I don't know if that includes.
I don't think that's.
Okay, you haven't, you haven't. And this applies to institutions as well, like schools.
Anyone within the bounds of the borough.
Yeah, so geographic, yeah, so. And it's, yeah, not lawful, it would thus far, like the, the state in order, there are definitely people who are in Ready for One Hundred townships, cities, towns, I don't know, class A towns, class B towns, whatever. And they've said, oh, can't we do it too? And so there's an effort to like, you know, pressure the state to allow it, but at the moment it's a separate effort.
Well, we have some lovely new apartments that are gonna be coming out.
Yeah. And I mean, the EAC is just like two words. The EAC, for those who weren't here last time, like, we have felt and still do feel that this would be the single most significant contribution towards our Ready for One Hundred percent renewable, you know, apartment neutrality commitment. You know, let yourself kind of pay those comparisons.
This is the only feasible way that we've identified to.
Yeah, to meet the Ready for One Hundred, yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, that's actually, it's like for an apartment building, people paid a lot of electric bills.
Yeah, basically each, each.
But the lease requirement.
The lease requires that, remember we put that, that's actually in the conditional use was you would have to put it in as lease requirement that the tenant would agree to opt in to, or.
Well, not opt out.
Yeah, that was something that I worked on.
Yeah. Yeah, that was the, that's about the issue.
Yeah.
So I guess they know it in advance, so.
Yeah.
They, they know before they sign the lease.
Right, right.
What if those tenants previously have opted into a different supplier?
Well, they'd have to rearrange it when it comes to the replacing.
Right.
And if you, any PICO account, because PICO is still, we, everyone still has to pay their individual distribution charge, you know, the bill still comes from PICO and all that admin that PICO does now.
PICO still owns the wires.
They still own the wires, they maintain the wires.
They're also, they're also asking as part of this petition, what PICO would like the PUC do, which is to say that, okay, for PICO to share the information that they would need to share with the CCA to implement this. That's what, and they've already had discussions with PICO prior to this.
And PICO, you know, there was a thought that maybe PICO or Ball could say, no, we don't want to do it, but it seems like they're saying, oh, it's just a small pilot, sure, whatever, fine. If the PUC approves, we're okay with it.
Further discussion? Thank you.
Thank you. So who should we, who should sign this pro bono?
I'll, I'll sign it.
You'll sign it, okay.
Yeah. All right. So give it to me either now, after the meetings.
Okay. All right, we can.
Do you have a physical name?
We agreed it to the meeting, yeah.
We'll sort it out.
We'll forward it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm having so.
And at the end of the day, we may be saving the borough taxpayers money.
Yeah, that's our hope for sure.
Let's see, two reports have been filed.
I do have a couple of updates for, for council. I know, start with a crappy update first. Sewer related. So if you remember, council passed, as part of the sewer budget, an increase in the budget to do some sewer maying, cleaning and cammering. It is paying dividends and found a critical failure on the 200 block of Mary Mary's. So if you also remember, it, the budget included capital funds to, in order, to enable us to respond to these things. So I don't know the details yet, I don't know how much it's going to cost yet. I want, this is, this was today, late this afternoon. So there's no action for council to take if this happens. Just wanted to make you aware that we have identified a critical failure and we will be addressing, Jeff Eldon and his crew are all over it and so stay tuned.
Are those the pictures that, is that what, there's two sewer pictures just for, is that what was the, what led to, oh, it's worse than what is pictured?
Yes. Those were just.
Do we need, do we need to authorize anything?
Not yet. Since it's emergency, everything is good. You will see it. Thank you.
Were you able to catch it before damage was done?
We don't know yet.
Oh, okay.
We don't know yet. We don't know the extent of the damage.
Before anybody complained.
Before anybody complained?
Yes.
That's always the side in it.
Yes. And thankfully, you know, Jeff has recorded that, you know, these, the folks who do the cammering don't usually release the video until after payment is made. But because they experienced this critical failure, they came up, we're gonna give you a screenshot of what we found, you might want to address this ASAP. So thank you to the contractors that were doing the work as well.
Good job.
Yeah. So again, thank you for, this council for fully funding the sewer budget to enable us to identify these critical failures and to respond to them. I wanted to update the council on a couple of grants. The LSA grant, the $250,000 that was originally secured for this building for the HVAC project was deemed ineligible. I had been working with DCED, working through the Office of State Senator Capoletti to get DCED to reconsider our scope of work to enable us to use the money for AD Windsor Academy. DCED has notified us that they are in support of it and they have forwarded it to the Commonwealth Financing Authority, who is the decision maker for final ruling. And that happens May 24th. So it's a good time. And so it's not official yet, and if you all want to cross your fingers, do your thing. I'm hopeful that the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars will be able to be used towards the eighty Windsor Avenue roof project. Other good news, Elm Grove Park, we have finally received the grant reimbursement for five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, which is half the cost of the purchase price of Elm Park, Elm Grove Park. Bridge reimbursements, design costs have been received, we received about a hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand dollars for bridge design costs, which represents ninety-five percent of those costs incurred up to date. There are some bridge costs still in process that are going through Amtrak review process, which are about ninety-eight-hundred dollars. I already said that we received our liquid fuels funds today. The eighty Windsor Avenue Roof Reinforcement Project, I have included an update in the meeting packet. I also wanted to announce that I have been speaking with the Narberth Borough Industrial Development Authority to see if there was any interest in them supporting the project through funding. And they met this past week, I think it was this week or late last week, and they are supportive of the idea. The feedback that the board has provided is that they would prefer that the users of the library also contribute some and they would be in a better position if they would, if, if the Industrial Development Authority would match those contributions. So the Industrial Development Authority is coordinating directly with the users of the library to see if they would be interested in contributing and that conversation is continuing. So that, that's also a glimmer of hope. It's, you know, it's not gonna be a lot of money, but any little bit will help. The capital improvement plan, I've been presenting it to the infrastructure committee and tonight I gave a crash course to the finance and administration committee. We are working out some kinks and we are on track to start presenting this to full council here in a month or so. So be on the lookout for that. At any time, if any council member wants to get a behind-the-scenes, in-person look at the capital improvement plan, feel free to contact me and schedule a time to review it and I'd be, I'd be willing to walk you through it at any time. Twenty-twenty-three audit is underway. I'm not looking forward to that, just from the time suck that it is, because it's just, it just takes a lot of staff time, but that is underway. Hopefully, you're appreciating the meeting administration updates for the meeting motion sheets and the information sheets. And that concludes my report.
Do I anticipate any other issues with the audit other than just the time?
No, it's just, no, 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 nothing. No, 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 thank you, yeah. It's just, it's a time suck and since there was so much turnover in twenty-twenty-three, we don't have good institutional knowledge required for audits. Usually you have, I mean, your bookkeeper, your finance director knows where everything was going for twenty-twenty-three. We don't have anybody who's here in twenty-twenty-three. So it's just gonna take a lot of time for us to find things, to come up with answers for the, it's just a really heavy time limit.
For the, um, prior, priorities, you know, I don't want you to have to do it all seven of us seven different times for that. Does it make sense for you to, you know, maybe the way you did for the budget last year?
Sure.
You know, put out two or three times and you can, you know, meet as a group, however many thoughts, you know, you might create, so it's convenient for you. If it doesn't work for any of us, maybe we'll pick another time.
That's a good idea.
Those seven times to.
Well, those of you who know me, I love talking about numbers, capital improvement projects, so they could talk about it till.
You just talked about the time suck.
That would be a nice distraction for me to.
Oh, yeah, but you want seven different times. I might eat your ear twice.
That's a good idea, thank you.
Any other questions for, for, I imagine? Okay. New business, business, comments for the good council?
I see the tree planting is gonna happen Saturday, boroughwide tree planting that the Shu Tree Commission runs twice a year. We're gonna plant forty-one trees, most of them are strict trees. Uh, I think this, no, it's not, sorry, forgot to, yeah, forty-one trees, we'll see them go up Saturday morning. I want to congratulate and thank the Shu Tree Commission for the work, for the maintenance of the tree goes there.
Thank you so.
Is that a record? That sounds like a lot.
No, it's been over fifty. Forty, forty, sorry, forty-one.
So we will be having an executive session after this meeting to discuss the Wonder Spring Lease Renewables for Two One State Avenue. I do not anticipate that we will come back into session, a public session. So I will take motion to adjourn.
So.
Second to the discussion, I'm going to adjourn. Favor of German. This meeting is adjourned, so thank you everyone.